All to order, this meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Engler.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Taylor.
Here.
And Mayor Newman.
Here. And we begin this evening with a closed session. City Attorney Newman.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. We actually, I know there's three matters on the agenda, but I am taking off Items 3A and 3B, and we will be meeting in closed session on Item 3C, Conference with Legal Counsel, pursuant to get my code section 54956.94, Anticipated Litigation or Initiation of Litigation.
Thank you, and we will be back at 6:00 PM.
2020年1月1日 早上好 今天是2020年1月1日 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 早上好 and I will walk over to the podium for that presentation.
And we are back from closed session. City Attorney Noonan, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Very good. At this time, I ask if you are able, please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have two special presentations this evening, the first of which is for Senior Concerns, and I will walk over to the podium for that presentation. So I'd like to welcome Andrea Gallagher, President of Senior Concerns, and Julie Harvey, Senior Concerns Director of Development, up to the podium. I'm proud to be able to present you both with this commendation on behalf of the entire City Council, recognizing Senior Concerns' 50th anniversary in our community. For half a century, Senior Concerns has been dedicated to creating a community where people thrive, continuously evolving to meet the changing needs of older adults and their caregivers by presenting, by providing vital resources, advocacy, and a foundation of support. Fifty years of helping our community is a huge accomplishment, and we thank you, Andrea, Julie, and everyone who volunteers and contributes to your amazing organization. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have this lovely commendation. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but we would like you to please join us here for some photos with the entire council.
Great. Could I make a little statement?
Please, please.
Okay, great.
Before, before we do.
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that it's an honor to stand here before you and celebrate our extraordinary milestone, fifty years of support for seniors and family caregivers. And it began as a small initiative driven by a group of caring residents and has blossomed into a vital lifeline for over thirteen thousand seniors and family caregivers each year. And so, we began with a compassionate group of individuals who wanted to provide assistance to frail seniors and alleviate the challenges they faced. And at that time, the biggest concern was what we called the invisible elderly, people that were isolated from society and support. And so, we responded by launching the Meals on Wheels program, dedicated not only to delivering nutritious meals but combating loneliness. We served thirty seniors that year. We now deliver over sixty-five thousand meals to four hundred and fifty homebound seniors with over two hundred dedicated volunteers. The growth has been remarkable, and it speaks to a larger truth. As the population ages, so does the demand for services that help seniors live independently and with dignity. So I'd really like to thank you this evening. As we look to the future, Senior Concerns remains steadfast in its mission to make Thousand Oaks the best place to grow old. And with the continued support of our staff, volunteers, and supporters, the next fifty years promises to be filled with even greater impact and support for the senior community. Thank you.
Fifty years. Congratulations. And now, let's go ahead and take that photo. And for our second special presentation this evening, I would like to welcome Cultural and Community Services Director Jonathan Zaret and TO Arts Associate Director Nikki Richardson up to the podium. Please join me. Good evening.
Good evening.
It is my pleasure, on behalf of the City Council, to present you with this proclamation proclaiming April as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. The City of Thousand Oaks believes that arts, culture, and creativity are essential to our thriving community and has actively supported the arts throughout the city on numerous events. I am delighted to proclaim the month of April as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. Thank you to you both.
Thank you.
And Jonathan, if you'd like to make a few remarks?
Thank you, Mayor Newman. Thank you to the council for this recognition of Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month here in our community. It means a great deal to have the support of our council as we do the work in the arts and culture space here in Thousand Oaks, and it is a privilege to work on behalf of the city for our residents as part of the creative economy and all that we do, whether it's with our community partners, our resident companies here at the venue, the Keneho Players, Kingsmen, all of our organizations throughout this wonderful community, the Hillcrest Center. And we are grateful for our ongoing partnership as well with TO Arts. With us tonight, we have a contingent from our Youth Arts Leadership Academy, who are going to accept the proclamation on behalf of TO Arts. TO Arts has been doing a great deal of work with youth and workforce development in terms of arts and culture. And to share just a little bit more with you is our Associate Director and incoming Executive Director Nikki Richardson.
Thank you, Jonathan. Mayor Newman and council members, let me add my thanks to this, for this generous support of the arts in our community. The TO Arts Youth Arts Leadership Academy, or YALA, is an eight-month program for high school and collegiate students. Over the course of the program, students work alongside industry professionals to explore an array of professions under the arts umbrella, and through teamwork and collaboration, the students create a culminating capstone event for the community. This year's capstone, called YALA Limitless, will be on Friday, May twenty-third. It will be a day of cross-discipline art workshops for elementary students and a master class for teenagers in the Founder's Room and the Courtyard of the Cavali Theatre, along with arts vendors, a student art gallery, and a culminating performance by YALA students and workshop attendees. Here tonight are some of our creative envoys, students who help represent TO Arts' youth workforce development programs in the community with artistic performances for different events or in places like this. So, thank you again.
Thank you. And please join us for a photo with the City Council. Madam Clerk.
This is the time and place for public comments. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Five individuals have requested to speak in pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
So what I'll do with the public comments is I'll, I'll announce the next three speakers. I'll name who's speaking and then who's up for the next two. And for the next two, if you could please come and sit in these two chairs by the podium so you're ready to go when we call your name. So the first three speakers are Christine Robert Fox.
And I feel so blessed to have witnessed those two presentations because they basically made my point for me, that Thousand Oaks is such an amazing community, and I'm really thrilled that, that I'm part of it. I moved here in two thousand and six to finish my master's degree at Cal Lutheran, and part of the mission and vision of Cal Lutheran, some people may know, is that it's important to create good community and help each other and mutual aid and that kind of thing. So I'm here to make sure that we don't lose Lassens. Lassens, I feel, has been a very big part of creating a wonderful community here. I know there are other people here who feel the same way, and there are people here who are not here who feel the same way because they've created this amazing community. I know that developers are allowed to rent to whomever they please, and I hope that the City Council would encourage actors that create and foster a good community like Lassens has. Also, it's interesting that I have experience, because when I first moved to Southern California from Colorado, I moved here in eighty-nine, and I remember when Erawan was on the north side of Beverly Boulevard, and it was a tiny little store, kind of like the Lassens was when it used to be over on Skyline. So it was still developing, and it was this great little natural food store, and I loved it. Then they moved to the south side of Beverly. It was a much more expensive property because it was adjacent to Television City, CBS Television City, and their prices went up, and I was like, well, it's cool, they're growing, and I love this organization, but it got very expensive, and it wasn't long before I couldn't afford to shop there anymore. I was happy for Erawan when they ended up in Agoura because I kind of have a fondness in my heart for them, but because I've been in Thousand Oaks and even Ventura before that, I've, I'm like, I died in the wool Lassens person, and I'm a Lassens supporter now, and I just know how connected they've made the community. And so, I'm going to call on you guys, because I know that in 2021, there was a City Council here who ended up agreeing to a lease that I feel was probably unfair for the city, and it may not have led us in the direction that we hope to continue in, fostering great community relations. So I'm hopeful that you guys can either renegotiate that lease that was formed in 2021 with developer Caruso, or find a way to get out of it so that we can encourage more small businesses to stay like Lassens, who actually helped create a great community. And I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Our next three speakers are Lori Camille, Chris Sam, and Peter Phaler. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lori from Thousand Oaks. Most organic smoothies at Lassens cost eleven ninety-nine. The cost for an organic smoothie at Erawan ranges from sixteen to twenty-three dollars. While this pricing works at Erawan Calabasas, where an affluent community finds it, dare I say trendy, to pay excess for organic, that culture is not prevalent here. While TO does value health and wellness, the customer base is much more economic. This makes sense, as according to the 2023 census, the median household income in TO was roughly a hundred and thirty-four grand. The median income in Calabasas was nearly twenty-five thousand dollars higher. That is why, City Council, it came as a shock to the community to learn that our beloved local organic market Lassens is being shuttered by Caruso as part of the collaboration with the city to develop a downtown Thousand Oaks. Multiple sources at Lassens all state the same. They were not given an opportunity to renew their lease. There was no negotiation, and Caruso informed them that when their lease is over, it will not be renewed. Instead, it was awarded to Erawan. The history of the Caruso arrangement at the lakes is mind-boggling. In 2004, despite the planning commission's disapproval, I hear, the City Council allowed him to lease the land for free, so long as the revenue was under twelve percent. And then, I believe, he purchased the lakes, or is in process to purchase the lakes, for two million, with an astounding thirty-seven years to pay a remaining balance. You can barely find a move-and-ready home for a million, and Caruso secured the lakes, or is in the process of securing for only two. This just sounds like a Faustian bargain. There is no plan for affordable housing. More oaks may be removed, and now adding salt to the wound, we are losing Lassens. The community is grieving and up in arms. The Save Lassens TO Facebook page has over one hundred members. While I know most of you are newer, you have inherited this issue. Please, I beg you, to reevaluate your downtown Caruso collaboration. While visions of a grow for TO may look nice on paper, what we need is affordable housing, protecting our trees and natural resources, and we need our Lassens. Please ask Caruso not to replace Lassens. Recommend Erawan instead go into the open space at the Promenade in Westlake. After all, Westlake has a median income even higher than Calabasas at a hundred and seventy-four grand, and is probably happy to pay top dollars for a strawberry-glazed skin smoothie. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Chris Sam, followed by Peter Phaler and Richard Lawson. Good evening, Mr. Sam.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, civic leaders, and city staff. Thanks for the opportunity to address you today. There's a transcript of, of what I'm going to say being handed to you. I don't intend following the transcript verbatim, but I, I am a resident of Thousand Oaks and also a homeowner on Kencrest Ridge, a neighborhood which is designated the eight-hundredth firewise community in 2024. Some of you may recall that. The leader of our firewise community, Dr. Ken Bridges, is also here today. I had the privilege of addressing you on March eighteenth regarding concern from the residents, your electorate, are feeling unsafe in this community because of wildfires, including from about fifteen thousand acres of open space surrounding the city. I'm here today to, to urge from you to adopt an urgent call to action to mitigate this fire risk to the community before a damaging fire, or, you know, similar to the recent wildfires, could impact this wonderful community. I know the state fire marshal has updated the Fire Hazards Severity Zone map about a year ago, which has designated large sections of the city as having a very high fire risk. And now, as a risk professional, by qualification as well, a catastrophic fire impacting the city of Thousand Oaks is inevitable. Okay? It's not a question of if, but it's a question of when and how bad. And these factors have had a detrimental impact on, for example, home values, which are, which close about sixty-one percent below sale price. Sale price is fifty-one below, percent below the list price, okay? And I've, I've referenced where that data comes from. As a risk professional, I also understand why insurance companies are reluctant to, to provide insurance coverage for the residents of Thousand Oaks. So, in having talked to several members in Ocosca, the Fire Department, and so on, I think what's evident is that the city lacks a comprehensive wildfire prevention plan and a city fire safe council. Okay? So the situation's urgent, honorable members, and, and I'm hopeful that you will act on this call for action. I'm, I'm willing to support this myself by volunteering my time to help the city in this regard, and I've asked a leader and a subject matter expert from Agoura Hills to also speak today about what they've accomplished and some other communities around Thousand Oaks have, have accomplished to date. So thank you for that, and I made it through time this time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sam. Next up is Peter Phaler, followed by Richard Lawson. Good evening, Mr. Phaler.
Good evening. My name is Peter Phaler, and I'm a resident of Agoura Hills. I'm a wildfire mitigation consultant and president of the Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council. I've lived in the Keneho Valley for twenty-nine years. On September seventh of last year, at the request of multiple Thousand Oaks residents and city staff, I introduced myself to council. On September twenty-sixth, I met with Bob Engler and Graham Watts and gave a presentation on how I could help the city of Thousand Oaks create an umbrella fire safe council and build out Thousand Oaks firewise communities. That meeting was followed up by a Zoom meeting on Friday, October fourth. I'm here today once again at the request of residents of Thousand Oaks. Since I was here last, we've all witnessed unprecedented destruction and loss of life in our region. It would only have taken a small wind deviation for that story to be ours. To be surrounded by fifteen thousand acres of wild land is a tremendous responsibility for the council. I consulted- I consult and manage wildfire mitigation programs, including the creation, certification, and management of Firewise Communities, ongoing wildfire education, both online and in person, online audience building and resident engagement, tracking of wildfire mitigation efforts by residents and communities. My clients include Oak Park Fire Safe Council, City of Agoura Hills, City of Calabasas, City of Hidden Hills, and Siskiyou County in Northern California. One of the only things that most stakeholders can agree upon is that wildfire mitigation must happen at the parcel level, and this can only happen with resident education and action. Thousand Oaks, just like most of the Canaho Valley, is a wooey community. The fires are not going away. It's only through education, home hardening, defensible space, and community wildfire prevention programs that we can protect lives and property. Wildfire by far is the biggest threat to the residents and structures of Thousand Oaks. Although most cities devote time and resources to response, not enough has been done in the area of prevention. We are not powerless against wildfire. There are things that we can do. As we know, wildfire has caused an insurance crisis. We've all heard the horror stories. For most people, their homes are the biggest investment and make up the biggest chunk of their retirement. However, reports from the Palisades Fire tell us that sixty percent of the residents were underinsured. We must help residents protect their investments, but it takes city support. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Next up, we have Richard Lawson. Good evening.
Yeah, I've never been here before.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Richard Lawson, and I've lived in Thousand Oaks for more than four years. I'm a Cal vet, and I served honorably. I wanted to start by saying that I appreciate all that the city has done to make Thousand Oaks a true gem, a place where anyone would be proud to raise their children and call it home. Our police department, fire department, and all the first responders, they do a good job keeping us all safe. So it brings me no joy or happiness to come before you today to let you know what has been going on in the last year in the Northwood Townhouse Complex near the Sunset Hills where I live. Our last president kept the complex clean and safe. She retired last year, but our new board, completely negligent in their responsibilities, has become so criminally negligent, it has forced me to come here today to speak out and tell the city what is going on where I live. First, they removed the locks and the signs of the gates to the pool, which are on a public road, Northwood Parkway. It is only a matter of time till a small child is found drowned. The pool is unhealthy. We have ducks swimming in it, and they refuse to close it. The city had put in an emergency egress steps for the workers of the Pedersen Water Pump Station, but the new board removed the no parking sign in front of the steps, and now the steps are blocked. In January, during the Santa Ana winds, we had a total car, a totaled car dumped in our pool parking lot leaking gas, but the signs clearly state that the pool parking lot was closed, and the new board refused to put the gate back up. The property has a storm drain culvert in the valley that has overgrown taller than ten feet. If we have a fire, which we will, it will overgrow and take over half of Thousand Oaks. The property is backed up, to which the city maintains a road leading to the water tank with the city sign no trespassing. But the fence was removed, and homeless are now living in the open space on the hill. It is only a matter of time till we have a catastrophic fire which engulfs all of Thousand Oaks. I ask this city to come help me, please. This has got to stop. It's not only wrong, it's illegal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lawson. We turn now to City Manager Drew Power for any response to public comment.
Thanks, Mayor Newman. In regards to Lassens, we are aware of the Lassens closure as well, and as someone that frequents that location for lunch, as with a lot of my colleagues, I think that is, it's certainly sad news. As the speaker mentioned, we don't have any direct control over the lease dealings, but our economic development folks will be in touch with the Lassens ownership and discussing the potential of other locations. From the article I read today in the paper, it sounds like that that might not be off the table to look at other locations, so we'll certainly be in touch with them. In regards to fire preparedness, we had a link these discussions around that at the goal-setting session. I have reached out to our county fire chief, Dustin Gardner, and I think he's been in touch with you, Mr. Sam, or at least sent a message, or he just sent me a note, and he sends a text message into you and a voicemail. So hopefully you guys will be able to get some time on the books. I'm just telling you what he said, so. And if you haven't, then drop me a line, and I'll get you in touch. He said he's eager to meet with you guys and have a conversation with the fire marshal. We'll send a city representative over there as well to continue that discussion, so I think it'll be. They've got a wonderful new facility with a big training room, so I think it's a wonderful opportunity there to do something. If you haven't seen their new facility out in Rancho Canaho. And then in regards to issues on the Northwood Complex, I already have Chief Paris out speaking with that resident. Fabiola, if there's any chance you might step out and just give the code enforcement process to that resident as well in case he has questions. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, very much. Appreciate it. We turn next to our consent calendar. Are there any items to poll or comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar. Councilmember Engler.
I move the ballots with all the items on a consent calendar.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please prepare us for a vote?
Have your voices, excuse me, your voice vote?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Taylor, thank you. That motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Are there any laws to read into the record?
No.
Very good. We turn next to our study session for the evening, which is the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 and fiscal year 26-27 Capital Improvement Program Budget Study Session. Leading the discussion this evening will be Finance Director Jamie Boscarino, and available for questions, our Budget Officer Ryan Roman, and Deputy Public Works Director Nader Hadari. Good evening, Ms. Boscarino.
Good evening, Mayor Newman, council members. Tonight is the study session for our fiscal years twenty-five through twenty-seven CIP budget. This action tonight is our second step in our biennial budget process. Steph has been diligently working on our budget and the CIP in specific since October of 2024. The CIP budget was presented to the Capital Facilities Committee yesterday, as well as our planning commission last night. We will bring back the CIP along with our operating budget on June tenth for public hearing and adoption. Although the CIP budget is for two years, it's actually a five-year planning document. This is a strategic way to focus on long-term needs and requirements and proactively plan now for any potential funding challenges in the future. There are many CIP projects that can take more than two years to complete, so having a five-year plan also helps to plan staff resources. Projects can also be multi-funded. A traffic and transportation project, for example, may come from a combination of grant funding, gas tax funding, developer fee funding. The proposed CIP budget includes a total of one hundred and fifty-nine point six million in overall budget across one hundred and forty-seven projects. Our proposed CIP budget manual is broken up into various sections. Our summary section includes the five-year summary by project category as well as by fund. It also includes our deferred requirement summary. Our next section is our projects by category section. The categories include facilities, housing, landscape, streetscape, library, open space, stormwater, streets, transportation, traffic, undergrounding, wastewater, and water. And our final section is our projects by fund. This includes a page for each fund and a listing of the projects proposed to be budgeted from that fund. Our fund summary includes the beginning amount available for spending, the amount to be carried over from existing projects into our proposed budget, any required reserves, anticipated capital revenues over the next five years, and our ending balance in the fund after taking into consideration all proposed projects. In preparing proposed projects, staff identifies which CIP priority it meets. The priorities were established in 2009 for guidance in prioritizing our capital projects. The definitions were most recently updated in 2015 to add city council top priorities to the definition for CIP Priority One. Priority One addresses health and safety, legal and regulatory requirements, or is a city council top priority. Priority Two are projects that are necessary and could lead to consequences if they were deferred. And Priority Three are all of our other projects that are nice to do but aren't essential. City council held its annual goal-setting meeting on March eighteenth, 2025, where the top ten city council priorities for fiscal year 25-26 were established. The proposed CIP incorporates city council priorities into the draft. All CIP projects that come before city council during the year have the CIP priority listed in the staff report. Projects addressing the priorities are either already in process or newly proposed in this budget, including several new projects for our downtown project, fire resiliency projects, bike lanes, and environment sustainability projects. The project by category section is where the detailed project sheets are for each of the CIP project proposed or carried forward as an existing project, as well as new projects identified in this proposed budget. There are no detail sheets included for projects that are proposed in the outer three years of the plan. The project detail sheets are where you can find information about a project, including the description of a project, justification for why the project is needed, if there's an operations impact from completing the project, when the project's anticipated to begin and finish, the city council CIP priority of the project, as well as funding sources for our five-year plan. The detail sheets include all pertinent information one would need to find out about the project. There are eleven project categories, as I mentioned, which are listed in numerical order here from greatest proposed budget to the least, with the water category proposed budget of thirty-three point eight million out of an overall proposed budget of one hundred and fifty-nine point six million. The facilities category is the second highest budget this year, in the amount of twenty-eight point eight million, due primarily to the downtown project. Child proposed carryover of existing project budgets is fifty-four point three million. The historical comparison of the CIP budget is presented in this graph. Although this is the highest proposed budget in ten years, the bulk of the increase over the current budget is due to facilities projects with an increase of sixteen point five million over the previous budget, an increase in our landscape projects in the amount of six point six million, and an increase in transportation projects in the amount of four point six million. The city currently has adequate funds available in our reserves, as shown in the fund analysis at the back of the budget, in order to complete the proposed projects over the next two years. The actual number of projects is proposed to reduce from one hundred and fifty-three to one hundred and forty-seven. This list provides the top ten projects based on total fiscal years twenty-six and twenty-seven budget, with carryover budget also included. These ten projects account for approximately thirty-two percent of the total proposed budget of one hundred and fifty-nine point six million. Six of the projects are existing projects in our budget, and four are new projects. This graph highlights the funding sources for the proposed CIP budget. The bulk of the funding is coming from our water fund, our general fund, and our wastewater fund. These three funds combined are approximately fifty-seven percent of the funding for the CIP budget. This map highlights the location of the one hundred and forty-seven proposed CIP projects and how funds are being invested throughout areas of the city. The map includes specific plot points for projects at a unique location. There's also a list of projects for the MSC, Hill Canyon, City Hall, as well as citywide projects. Citywide projects are projects with multiple locations, such as our pavement overlay program and curb ramp projects. Onto our funds. Our general fund is the city's discretionary funding source, as it can be used for any purpose. Funding for the CIP program of the general fund is from our capital reserves that have already been set aside for capital projects, not from our ongoing general operating revenues. Based on several years of general fund surpluses, there are currently adequate capital reserves available in our general fund to fund the proposed projects. Our total proposed budget is twenty-eight point three million, with a carryover of five point five million. Our largest general fund project is our downtown Thousand Oaks project, with a proposed budget of eleven point five million. This project is in very early design stages right now, and staff will be back in front of city council at various stages throughout the next two years for further discussion and updates. The undergrounding of overhead utility lines along Hodencamp Road from Thousand Oaks Boulevard to Hillcrest Drive is proposed to run concurrent with the future development of the vacant parcel at Thousand Oaks Boulevard in Hodencamp. The South Branch Arroyo Canaho Drainage Improvements Project will improve drainage and upgrade the existing underground storm drain system in Newbury Park in order to remove properties from the theme of floodplain. And Lynn Road at Jan's Channel will be rehabilitated to replace a deteriorating nine-hundred-foot-long concrete line channel adjacent to the west side of Lynn Road. Our library fund is mainly funded by property tax revenue. If there's not adequate reserves in our library fund to pay for capital projects, our general fund will provide support. Proposed are two battery energy storage systems at both of our libraries to begin design in the next two years. These projects will provide resilience and off-grid operation in the event of a power outage. Priority is to support use of our libraries as emergency cooling centers and/or shelters. Our gas tax funds are restricted to streets and roads projects. Funding comes from Gas Tax and Transportation Development Act funds. Some of our project highlights include our biennial overlay slurry and curb ramp projects, as well as the sidewalk replacement and repair program. Funding for the sidewalk repair program was significantly increased to one point eight million this budget from the previous budget. Staff also recently presented our pavement management plan to city council, and that plan identified an eleven million annual need for street maintenance for the next two years. This proposed budget has project costs equal to funding available currently, which does leave a gap from the required twenty-two million. As staff is finalizing our proposed operating budget, we'll identify how much support our general fund can bring in order to close that gap and hopefully fund that full twenty-two Staff regularly seeks out federal and state grant opportunities to fund projects and has been very successful in obtaining grant funding in the past. Highlights of our projects include Hillcrest Drive and Lynn Road Bike Lanes and Pedestrian Improvements Projects, and the MSC Microgrid Project, which all have grant funding identified. There's definitely uncertainty at the federal level right now with grant funding and pauses of grants, so staff is closely monitoring the situation and will pause any grant-funded projects from beginning construction until grant funding is secure, and we can be certain that we will receive the funds. Our capital projects and developer fee fund highlights include the Kelly Road Drain and Road Widening Improvements Project, which is utilizing our former RDA bond proceeds, undergrounding of overhead utility lines on Hillcrest east of Erbs Road in conjunction with the for-sale affordable housing project there, and the Agoura Road and Westlake Boulevard Widening Project, as well as continued acquisition of open space as parcels become available. Our lighting and landscaping funds are primarily from our lighting and landscaping special assessment tax and property tax revenue. Projects are restricted to the assessment zone areas. Some of the highlights include emergency generators at various intersections to power our traffic signals during public safety power shut-offs, as well as reflective back plates for traffic signals to increase the visibility of the signals at intersections with the highest collision rates and improve our visibility in general and during power outages. There are also landscape improvements along Cannon Road and Westlake Boulevard. The city has available carryover for opportunities that may arise for homelessness and affordable housing projects. Funds are restricted for those purposes, and staff will make any recommendations to city council in the future on how to expend that budget as opportunities became available to city. There are many challenges and complexities to funding our stormwater program. Municipalities throughout California face limitations in creating dedicated funded streams to manage the regulatory framework for stormwater management, including the requirements of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, our municipal separate storm sewer system permit, and our total maximum daily load requirements. system permit, and our total maximum daily load requirements. The city stormwater program is partially funded by countywide stormwater assessment. Unfortunately, it is inadequate to meet our capital requirements necessitating general fund support. Project highlights include our stormwater to sewer diversion project at Malibu Creek, and the watershed management plan implementation study, and then a resulting project from the study. Our water fund capital projects are funded through the capital portion of water rates. Projects include emergency generator installations at various pump stations, and a power backup system at Lengrange Pump Station to provide resiliency and redundancy, again, during power outages and natural disasters such as wildfires. Continued replacement of old meters with AMI meter technology is also included to update our technology capabilities for more real-time water usage for our customers. Our wastewater fund is also funded by the capital portion of our wastewater rates. Major products include tertiary filters rehabilitation at our treatment plant, slope stabilization also at our treatment plant, and wastewater collection systems master plan implementation, which will address first priority project proposed in our master plan. The majority of funding for our transit fund come from grants and TDA funds. Our project highlights include transitioning our buses to zero emission buses, a power backup resiliency center at our transit center, and transit battery energy storage at the municipal service center to provide resilience and off-grid operation for transit operations in the event of a power outage. Our other enterprise funds are our golf course fund, our solid waste fund, and our theaters funds. The majority of the funding for the golf course proposed is to update our maintenance facility at the golf course. And then in our solid waste fund, we are funding for a food recovery and storage facility. So to summarize, our proposed CIP budget is 159.6 million, which includes 147 projects. Projects focus on our city council priorities, as mentioned throughout the presentation. We also make significant investments in maintaining our key assets, which is critical for long-term financial health. And as you can see, a theme on resiliency for power public safety shut-offs that we all experienced here in the city over the past several years, so planning a lot of projects to provide resiliency that we can continue operating our pump stations and our traffic signals during those times. We're also continuously monitoring the situation and paying attention on the tariffs in our economy right now and impacts on revenues, which are greatly unknown and could potentially impact grant revenue significantly. We do have flexibility to delay projects as necessary to ensure our city remains fiscally sound. Some projects already have the grant funding available and money available from capital reserves, however, will still remain cautious in moving forward with any proposed projects. Our public works departments are already looking at existing projects that we have in the pipeline that have grants and identifying whether or not those need postponed at all, or if we do have certainty that we will receive the grant funding. So we're already beginning that work internally. So tonight's recommendations are to receive information on our proposed budget, schedule a public hearing for June 10th, 2025, and find that this action is not a project as defined under CEQA. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and staff is available from other departments as well.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Boscarino. Much appreciated. Other questions? Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the report. And I know the report is like the easy part. Thank you for all the hard work that goes into this. You kind of mentioned it at the end as far as economic uncertainty. It's been an exciting few days. I'm sure for Mr. Adams being a financial advisor, it was pretty busy. Can you talk about if we really see an economic downturn? How nimble are you? And how difficult is it to kind of pull back if needed with this presented budget?
Yeah, so we are definitely very nimble. We did go through this during COVID, when there was a lot of uncertainty with COVID, and we all got together and decided which projects needed to be postponed and put on hold, which projects were critical that we move forward. So we're very flexible at the staff level. Obviously, if a project's already in construction, you're too far down that pipeline, and you know, you have to move forward and completing that project. But you could design a project and just postpone construction, postpone going out to bid. We could decide the project hasn't started yet, so let's hold off on design. But we work very closely with our public works department in determining the path forward and keeping them aware, and they're keeping us aware of what's going on and what they're seeing with their grants.
Okay. And then the second one with, you know, on the facilities budget was, you know, larger than at least it's been, because we have some future planning that we're kind of looking forward at. How do you feel about just, you know, making potential investments at this time? And do you feel like this is a, for this budget that we're looking at, do you feel like it's a conservative budget? Do you feel like we're taking kind of risk in this budget? What's your overall outlook of where we're at?
Yeah, so I think some of the projects that are newer are really critical for our city to implement, and you heard the theme with a lot of the projects related to resiliency and power outages. You know, I think we need to prioritize those types of projects, because we all know, come next fall/winter, we're gonna have wind events again, and we're gonna have power shut-off. And we want to prioritize that, making sure that we're doing what we can, that the city is gonna maintain operations during power events, that, you know, people can be safe driving the streets during these power events, that the traffic signals will still be operational, that our pump stations will still be operational. So certainly prioritizing those types of safety-related projects. With downtown project in specific, that's a very long-term planned project. We're moving through a very preliminary design right now. You know, it could take several years before we really start seeing any sort of shovels in the ground or anything. So I think we still have time on that, and I think there is 11 million proposed in this current budget cycle, which we already have 40 million in cash set aside to fund part of that project. So I don't see any concerns right now with this budget.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Adam.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's, I would say, an ambitious agenda, but we have a lot of infrastructure we have to keep efficient and current for now and in the future. And I do believe when we get the final report, each one of these projects will be graded, one through three, and one being the most essential, two being pretty essential, and three being, well, a little more discretionary, correct? So that's a good way to, I think, for you to be able to prioritize these things. There were a couple of projects that stood out to me. I want to make sure I got one straight here, and Nader might know about this, I'm sure. That neighborhood that's in the FEMA floodplain, is that the South Arroyo Creek project that we're talking about? Did I get the right one there?
Yes, Councilmember Adam, good evening. Yes, that is the, it's a large neighborhood in the Newbury Park area there that is partially in the city and partially in the county.
Got, right.
They're off of Orchard. And so that project we have in the budget book, you may be referring to as a placeholder for a future construction implementation project that may be necessary to help upsize some drainage conveyances and be able to get some property owners out of the floodplain.
Got it, yeah. I hope we give that a one, because, you know, it's a, the neighborhood's in a floodplain, so the insurance is high. And if there's proper, and I think our drainage, our sewer, what do you call it, storm drains are just inadequate. They need to be bigger, and if we can fix all that, the neighborhood will come out of the FEMA floodplain, the insurance rates will drop, correct?
That is correct, and, but we're in the middle of the study right now to determine what is, you know, what may need to be upsized and where the infrastructure may need to be improved. But that's not the only aspect of the current study we're performing. We're also calculating and using the most modern methods to determine what the base flood elevation really should be. Some of the FEMA data that's out there and that the insurance companies are relying on to obligate, you know, people to obtain the flood insurance is based on some older data, some more crude analysis and engineering analysis that was done. We're able to do that in a more accurate sense these days and be able to maybe, it's possible that some properties may be able to come out of the floodplain even without any improvements, just with the more realistic drainage data and hydrology. So there may be some earlier wins that predate any actual million or $2 million construction projects. So we're hopeful of that, and we're anticipating bringing that study once it's completed to the council later this year.
Oh, okay, good. Well, that would be a good result. And I know there's, you know, there's more to it than just the storm drains, but ultimately, if we could get those folks out of the flood zone, I think there's a lot of seniors that live there, it would save them some money, so I'd like to see that happen. Oh, and the other one, the undergrounding of the Hodencamp, that fits in with 500 T.O. Boulevard, right?
Correct. The property owner is obligated to underground the power poles through his site up 2000 Oaks Boulevard, and this is basically a continuation is to get rid of the infrastructure across the Boulevard and up, and with the goal of getting to Hillcrest.
Right, yeah. So the property owner will do their part, and then we take it heading north to Hillcrest to bury the lines from there, correct?
Right, yes, or as far as we can toward Hillcrest, depending on the budget and so forth. But there's economies of scale by doing these projects together at the same time and not letting the developer just complete his part, then there's still a couple poles on the Boulevard, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be a worthy project, probably not particularly cheap, but aesthetically at least, it would look great to get those big giant towers buried, I'm sure. And maybe there's some health risks, I don't know if that's been proven or not, but one way or another, I think that would be a good project.
And maybe some inherent or indirect PSPS or fire resiliency benefits as well.
Yeah, oh, good point, good point. And just one last one. We're putting in a lot of bike lanes on Lynn Road and Hillcrest, and which is great. So we're anticipating there'll be a demand for these lanes, right?
That is correct.
If we build it, they will come, is that the idea?
Yeah, there are areas of town that have maybe more activity on the bike, and many of those areas are typically where there are existing bike infrastructure. Some of these other areas that we're contemplating or making the improvements on need that or are missing, that, those elements. So we're endeavoring to improve the bike infrastructure citywide, as we have been for the last several years, and we're also embarking on that ATP study to help us identify where we should point our efforts going forward in the future. But these areas, Lynn Road, et cetera, was identified previously, and we were able to get some grant funding. We have that grant funding in place, and we're actually in design on those right now. The Lynn Road one, I just recently went to the Traffic Commission and to the BAT.
All right, good, yeah, I remember. Mayor Newman might want to comment that, as an avid bicyclist.
It is a very popular.
Thank you, Mr. Hidari.
Thank you, Councilmember Adam. It is Lynn Road, that stretch of Lynn Road from, really from the 101 overpass all the way out to Dos Vientos is one of the most heavily ridden sections of town. So are they class-two lanes now, which are separate lanes with?
Class-four, yes.
Lane dividers, but we're going for class-four with physical dividers, which will definitely increase safety and hopefully reduce accidents.
And increase riders.
It's a very highly ridden section already.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I would say it's one of the most, certainly for recreational riders, but we'll get into this some more. We're talking about capital improvement tonight. But as we get into ATP, it's great to help our recreational riders, of which I am one, but also for folks who are using bikes and other vehicles for transportation as well.
Okay, great.
Great questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for the report and all the hard work that went into it. You know, these types of budgets and projections are difficult under the best of times, and it does remind me somewhat of 2020, when all bets were off, and here we are again with a lot of turmoil in the markets and everything, so. My question, I think, really is, has to do with the resiliency aspects of what we're looking at. The bike lane, I'm a full supporter of the Act of Transportation Plan, and Lynn Road is a key part of that. However, have the lessons learned from our PSPSs from last, actually, earlier this year, and then lessons learned from the fires in LA City, in my mind, bring those to a much higher priority. Do we have independent funding for that as opposed to grant funding that may or may not be secured, or how secure is the funding for those infrastructure, both the water and the traffic mitigation measures?
So for the generators and backup power systems at our water pumps, that'll be coming from our water fund. You know, if we were able to get grant funding, great, but we would proceed with those ones out of our water fund, just using our capital revenue funding. We wouldn't pause them if we didn't receive any grant funding. And the ones out of our lighting fund for our traffic signals, same thing, we have adequate funding right now to fund those projects. If we get grants, awesome, but we wouldn't postpone them if we didn't.
Well, definitely, we'll keep asking for those grants, but it's nice to know we do have the money available for these more urgent improvements. Well, thank you for that. In terms of our housing, we have a ribbon cutting, I guess, coming here in another month or so at our Navigation Center. That has now been fully funded, bought and paid for, I understand, but it's not really part of our capital this time.
Right, so the construction is not included as part of this upcoming budget, because the construction is almost complete, we're close to that ribbon cutting. You'll see funding in our operating budget for the operations of the facility, because obviously now we'll transition to operating the site and funding, I hope, the mission, who will be our onsite operator. So you don't see any more construction in this budget, but you'll see the operations in our operating budget.
And we have the other project up on Hillcrest there. It's not nearly as progressed along as the Navigation Center. Is there funding behind that CIP?
No, so if you'll recall, that project is people's self-help housing, and so we funded the purchase of the property, 10 million to purchase the property, and then they won the award of the project, and so they're working right now on obtaining all of their financing for their project. They've obtained some financing, but they're working on getting all that together and applying for some state funding and other funding. So we're not, the city itself is not funding the construction that's done by people's self-help housing.
So in some respect, we've already pre, we've already put our capital improvement money into it to buy the property and then give it to, or set it aside for people's self-help.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez.
I'll echo all of the sentiment of the great work that went into this budget, and I have a general question, and really just for public knowledge. Some of the questions I asked was around sales tax and to the point, you know, several have made around the different industries being impacted right now, and knowing how heavily we rely on our sales tax from the car sales revenue. And you threw out some really good points that I think I'd just love to hear how, what our response is to that, some of the look-back experience we have with points in time similar to what we might be experiencing going forward, as well as the diversity of sales tax opportunities and maybe some other partners that help us with that forecasting.
Right, so on sales tax, in particular, sales tax is an operating revenue in our general fund. So sales tax goes towards our operating budget and not towards our capital budget, so we're not reliant on the swings in sales tax to fund our CIP program. Out of the general fund, most of our CIP budget is funded by our reserves in our general fund, so as we have a surplus one year, that then goes into our general fund reserve, and we're able to then fund our capital projects out of our reserves. So thankfully, sales tax doesn't play much into our CIP budget, and with our water and wastewater fund, we already have a significant amount of money set aside to fund these capital projects. And of course, we have gas tax revenue that comes in every year to fund all our streets and roads. Really, the primary impact would be on the grant funding and all of the grant projects that we're planning on using. that we're planning on using federal and sometimes state funding. Some of our state funding is a pass-through from the federal as well for grants. So that's primarily what we would be focused on right now as part of this proposed CIP budget is those grant-related projects, since we do have a significant amount already set aside in our reserves and our general fund for projects.
Yeah, and I would just say I learned that through this process and I thought it was a really insightful and telling approach to our quality of life when we do have fluctuations outside of our control, why we continue to experience such a high standard.
I'll also add my thanks. It's a very complex undertaking and I appreciate the effort that you and team have put into explaining this clearly in terms we can all understand. Thank you very much for that. Councilmember Adam before gave his requests for a few prioritized items. I agree with them all. I think those are good things to ask for. My own request is less of this project or that, but of a whole class of projects. I hope we can keep all of the things that do infrastructure maintenance fully funded, that we don't have to do deferred maintenance. Because the, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, you know, of cure later on. One of the reasons we have such good services is because we pay attention to keeping our infrastructure, well, in good working order. And that is shown to be beneficial again and again. We're on this resiliency point. I think it's very, very timely of you and team to emphasize resiliency and to add that into upcoming CIP budgets. We just saw that in January where the Public Works team did really heroic work in keeping the city water supply safe and available, even though it had no power for days and days and days. No one had foreseen that before. And now we're adding capacity to be able to have backup power when we need it. So those kinds of resiliency efforts, those kinds of maintenance efforts, they're not exciting, they're not headline grabbing, they are very necessary. So I hope we can keep that as a high priority.
Agreed, yep.
Appreciate that. The other thing I want to follow up on is a line of questioning Mayor Protem Taylor had on forecasting in an uncertain environment. And we certainly do have one of those right now. Where just in four days, the S&amp;P 500 has lost 14% of its value in four days. And with tariffs, as you said, we don't, we don't really know what's going to happen. So I wonder if you can make a few comments about, how do we go about, if we're planning to buy, let's say, 10 pickup trucks in two years' time, how do we, how do we know, how do we go about budgeting where we don't know if they're going to cost what they cost today, or 10% more, 20% or 50%? How do we think about that process when the cost of basic items is so uncertain?
Yeah, so there's two sides to it. One, you have the cost of it. So what is the expenditure or the expense going to be? And our Public Works team is the ones primarily putting forward what they think the costs will be. And of course, we're in an uncertain environment. We've been experiencing that over the past five or so years with inflation and construction costs skyrocketing. So we already have some of that experience and looking at what's the past trends been recently and how have costs risen? And then the other side of it is what do we think we're going to be getting in revenues? And some of them are easier. You know, I mentioned our water wastewater funds. You know, we know essentially how much we're going to be getting each year and what portion of that goes to fund our capital program. So some of the funds are, you know, we feel pretty confident that this is what we think we're going to get in revenue to be able to fund our CIP. So we do a balance of this is what we think we're going to get. We've always been very conservative here at the city in doing projections and conservating, you know, projecting on the lower end of the scale for our revenues coming in because we want to make sure that we aren't going to get ourselves into any sort of financial situation. So I would just say it's a balance of being conservative, just in general, long term and, you know, relying on our experts and our Public Works team on what they think those cost increases are going to be.
Yeah, and I've seldom heard good fiscal management express so clearly. So thank you, I would agree. I guess my final ask on this would be of as, as we continue to deal with uncertainty around state funding, there may be a deficit, we'll talk about that a little bit later. There may be shortcomings in federal grants, both current and future funding. I hope, of course, I hope we fully fund everything and can do all the things we've set forth in this budget. But if there are shortcomings, my request of not just you personally, but all of staff in this council is that we have those discussions in public, that there be transparency around. If we do need to make cuts, we have a process around that. We can talk about what needs to stay and what needs to go. But let's have that discussion in public. I hope you'll keep coming back and we can talk about that if need be.
Certainly.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion. I saw Mayor Protem Taylor first.
I beat you to it. I just want to say again, thank you. You guys show so much wisdom and even discipline when putting this together and all of us benefit from it. And so I will move 11A to accept the proposed budget and find that this action is not a project to find inner sequoia.
Counsel.
Uh-oh, and schedule a public hearing? And schedule a public hearing, thank you, Tracy.
I just want to make a quick comment. It's, a couple of weeks ago, we had our priority setting exercise. It's a very important exercise that we do. If you look at our CIP budget and compare it to our priorities, staff is very attentive to that priority list. And I appreciate staff taking our input at that priority session and really going forward with it.
It's an excellent point, thank you. Please prepare us for a vote.
And that motion passes 5 to 0.
Before our folks head off to DIAS, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we had, we have not one, but two individuals on the DIAS up there that were announced for promotions this week. Nader Hidari will be our next Public Works Director upon Mr. Fenley's retirement next month. And Mr. Ryan Roman, who's been the architect of our budget and budget process, is joining the City Manager's Office as the Assistant to the City Manager position. So I've apologized profusely to Jamie, but we're really excited to have him come join our team.
Well, I'm thrilled to see both promotions, not just because they're promoting from within. In general, it's a good idea, but because these are such, these are two outstanding individuals and I couldn't be more pleased for both of you and for the city and for all of our residents and businesses. Congratulations. Very well. We move on now to a couple of trip reports. The City Council has been traveling on the city's behalf. There are two trips to discuss. One is our annual lobbying slash conference trip to Washington, D.C. This, in this year, four out of five council members attended different parts of that trip. So Mayor Protem Taylor and I attended the lobbying portion of that. Councilmembers Engler and Gutierrez attended the National League of Cities, Congressional Cities Conference portion of the trip. I attended parts of both. So we're going to hear from each of us on which bits of this big, big project we undertook. And I'll start off with saying that, as usual with our lobbying trips, these are both very educational for all of us and also very beneficial. These trips in the past have returned tens of millions, maybe more, in federal funding for our city. So there's no question that there's a great benefit for doing this. It's also really useful to meet with other city-elected officials from around the nation and discuss how they're facing some of the same problems that we are. And it's amazing how much commonality there is, on the one hand, but also how much creativity there is around addressing some of these issues. And it's good to have sounding boards from people who are in the same place. So to kick it off, I'll mention that Mayor Protem Taylor and I met with Representative Julia Brownlee and the staffs of Senator Alex Padilla and Adam Schiff. And we also had agency meetings with the U.S. Department of Transportation, the Forestry Service and the Environmental Protection Agency. And we had five different asks. I read the asks for three of them, Mayor Protem Taylor did two of them. The three asks that I had were in the areas of building a community resiliency network. This is this resiliency word we heard earlier tonight, so important. We, in a previous year, had asked for funding to have power backup resiliency at the Brimhall Library. This would be in the form of solar plus battery backup. So when the lights go out during an emergency, the power is still on there. In January, as we all know, we had the longest and most widespread outages in city history. And those affected the Goble Center, which is our evacuation point where there's an emergency, and this building, City Hall. So we are asking for funding to extend that resiliency network beyond the Brimhall Library to encompass the Goble Center, the Teen Center, Newbury Park Library. And that way, there is resilient power when the main grid power goes out. That was one of our asks. Another ask was that we beef up the power at our water pumping stations. Specifically, we're looking for large-scale generators and hardened infrastructure to house them at four of our larger pumping slash reservoir stations. And the final ask that I had was around our advanced water metering program, Advanced Metering Infrastructure, AMI, is the term of art. Ms. Boscarino alluded to that earlier. And this will give residents and businesses real-time information about their water usage. So if there's a leak on a property, you don't get a two-ton bill in a month. You find out about it that day through an app on your cell phone. So those are the three asks I'll have. With that, I'll throw it to Mayor Protem Taylor, who had additional requests.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you started off, the four of the five council members were there. I was really trying to get Al to come, but he was so concerned about giving Tracy a panic attack having all five of us out there. So just want to let you know, he's thinking about you. You know, the, it's interesting and timely. The gentleman, Peter Phaler, was speaking about ways in which our community can, you know, be more prepared for the fire. And the things that he said, or a handful of the things that he said, were home hardening, defensible space, community wildfire prevention programs, so that we can protect ourselves for the next event that we might face. And that was one of the asks that we had. It was a combo of education as well as removing some of the more flammable kind of plants and potential trees in our open space so that we could be more prepared. And then the second ask was around dial-a-ride. It's one of our most used services and a handful of the vehicles we lease. So we're looking for some additional funding so that we can have, move out of lease into ownership and start working on some of the deferred maintenance that we have on those vehicles. All in all, it felt very productive. We were jam-packed, I loved that aspect of it. There definitely is some uncertainty about grants and funding. And so I feel like we asked and pitched the right things and so we will see. But lastly, and this might be a good segue over, I was flying out as Bob and Ty were flying in. So I got to see them, we had dinner, I left, and then they carried on to the League of Cities event. So all in all, I think it was productive and then we'll see what, you know, if we bear any fruit from it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Taylor. And let's turn now to Councilmember Engler and Gutierrez on the National League of Cities portion of the trip. You each attended several meetings there? Very good, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. Thank you, Councilmember Engler. I, like many things this year, it was my first time out traveling on the city's behalf and was really excited by the environment of learning. And as Mayor Newman mentioned, just having colleagues from different cities facing similar, just realities within their cities and how they're problem-solving. So there was a lot of really good conversation and learning. But what I found to be most interesting, but also powerful of the 3,000 local elected officials that were in session with myself and my fellow councilmembers here was the lobbying we did on behalf of NLC at Capitol Hill. And we had three asks of the elected officials, the congress member staffs that we met with. And I found them to be really supportive of this local agencies that we all represented. So that made a lot of sense, but I wanted to share them specifically with you all. So the first ask, which I think was kind of a theme throughout the entire conference, was a collaborative energy amongst city, local elected officials, the state and federal. And really wanting to champion a message of commonalities and finding ways to make and serve as bridges for our community's needs and concerns. So we took that to Capitol Hill and to the feet of our congress members. And the second was to protect the tax exemption status that, in one of the ways that cities borrow money, which is via bonds, and to really just protect that pathway for funding. And I was really encouraged by the space because all of us are elected officials in a nonpartisan way, that that was presented in such a fashion where it wasn't one way or the other. And nobody's aisle benefited more than the other. So again, just a really important theme that I was encouraged by and wanted to bring back home. The last one was, of course, for continued state and local control. We are elected by our local constituents because we care and we also live and breathe in these spaces. And so we just feel really strongly about our vested interest in keeping the quality of life that we're all used to here in Thousand Oaks. And again, 3,000 members strong, we took those three points to Capitol Hill and I thought it was a really privileged experience and I was grateful to be there.
Thank you very much, excellent summary. And to wrap up the Washington trip, I should note that we were all very well-supported by a very capable team led by our Legislative Affairs Manager, Mina Leba, and also by our lobbyist slash government affairs consultants, Jim Crum and Maggie McGrane. All three of them helped us navigate what Mayor Protem Taylor alluded to, very uncertain times. It was, it was they who helped us shape and craft our message that resiliency is important. And even though this is really uncertain, and we should be clear on that, we don't know what's going to happen with this year's set of funding requests. All of those requests, in all of the meetings we had. All of those requests, in all of the meetings we had, were met with very favorably. And that's a credit to the team that put those asks together. These are the right set of requests and they will only enhance public safety and resiliency here. And it's a credit to that team that we were able to make those requests. So that's our Washington report. We came back and then one day later, Councilmember Gutierrez and I went up to Goleta for a League of California Cities, Channel Counties Division meeting. And Councilmember Gutierrez has an update on that meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. This was a very localized meeting of local officials. Similar points to bring home, lots of collaborative energy. And we got to hear from Congressman Carbahal, who shared the sentiments of an energy within DC and amongst Congress with the new administration, of course, sharing a lot of the concerns around some of the themes we've talked about tonight and furthering into immigration enforcement, tariffs, trade, and program freezes. But shared how we can collaborate and really take care of our communities across county lines. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else? Those are my takeaways.
I appreciate that. That's a good summary of Representative Carbahal's address. We also heard from, this is, when I say it's the Channel Counties, we should say what we're referring to. I think it is three counties. Is it three? Yeah, it's Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo counties. And there were something like 25 different agencies present at the meeting. We heard from Representative Carbahal on the federal side. And then from the state, we heard from Assemblymember Greg Hart, who represents, I think his district mostly is in Santa Barbara County. Assemblymember Hart is an expert on budget matters. He's spoken before. He's got a pretty good track record on predicting where we'll be in terms of budget surpluses and deficits. The budget currently proposed by the governor has a modest 300, it's 300-something billion and it has a modest 300-something million surplus. However, Assemblymember Hart predicted there would be a deficit this year in state spending of somewhere between $2 billion and $6 billion. Given his past track record, I tend to give that prediction some credence, given his past forecasts. So it's something to be mindful of. He also made the point on the federal stage that California is a net contributor. The state contributes, and if we're looking at federal budgeting, and that's come up here several times tonight, California contributes about $80 billion more to federal budgets than it receives. So we are a net contributor to the United States of America. And that's essentially it for our Goleta trip report. Let's take these two trip reports together as a single item and I'll ask for a motion on the reports. Mayor Protem Taylor.
I will move 15A and B. I think that's it, huh? All right.
Based on the recommendation.
Based on the recommendation, staff.
Thank you. And let's vote.
And that motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. And our final item of the evening is the city manager's report. Mr. Powers.
Thanks, Mayor Newman. We'll be back in a couple of weeks, on the 29th of April. Currently slated for a slew of public hearings, CDBG hearing, user fees public hearing, alarm system ordinance update public hearing, and a cannabis tax appeal public hearing. We do have a committee report on our community events grant recommendations from that committee. And we're anticipating a follow-up report on city council recognition that evening as well from our Cultural and Community Services Department.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Powers. And with that, we are adjourned to our next meeting on April 29th. Good night, Thousand Oaks.